The meeting to order, welcome everyone, please rise with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving into announcements, I'd like to remind everyone that these board meetings are our business board meetings. They're held in public and they're not public board meetings. The board is governed by Idaho Code Title 33, Chapter 5, Idaho Administrative Procedures Act, or ADAPA, and follows our district policies. The audience shall refrain from applause, snickers, whispers, quiet comments, et cetera, as it interferes with due process. If you are asked by a trustee to stop, you must stop, or you will be asked to leave the meeting. If repeated requests by a trustee are disregarded, the meeting will be recessed or adjourned, depending on the severity of the issue at hand. As a reminder, the Fire Marshal has issued a certificate of occupancy for this room as a maximum capacity of thirty-six. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved. Second.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing them, the motion carries. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-206-1B.
So moved. Second.
Having a motion in a second, we do need a roll call vote.
Sheriff Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Sheriff Rissick?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Bane?
Yes.
Trustee Quinn?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna have to ask everyone to leave so we can go into executive session.
Enjoy the sunshine.
Executive session and took a three-minute break, so to speak. So, right now, we need to look at the verbal narrative of what happened at the April 20th meeting. We were trying to hold discussion, Bob made this statement, that he felt he had heard enough and asked if I would entertain, if the chair would entertain a motion. At that time, I told Bob, we can't, it's a discussion item only. There was further conversation that occurred, and then Randy called for a motion, Bob seconded. Or actually, Bob asked if I would entertain a motion again, and then Randy made the motion out of frustration. I said, "Go ahead," and we, there was a motion in a second, and we voted. That is a violation of Idaho Code. And so, at this point, I would motion, I move, that the board acknowledge a violation occurred at the April 20th, 2023 meeting with respect to the approval of the Heritage Health MOU, and the board declares that the action was void. Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing them, the motion carries. Now that we have acknowledged and cured our action, we will enter back into discussion of the Heritage Health MOU.
It's going right across your face, so we were trying to figure out where it's coming from.
I think it's actually coming from there.
Oh, no.
No, it's like in the top slit. Oh, I'll scooch up.
So, where we were at, I don't even know how to pick up this discussion. Did, we were given information at that meeting, which wasn't noticed on our, on the agenda. Does everyone have a chance to look at that, that little bit of information we were provided with? So Lisa, are you, do you know, on this information, it says SI protocols, which I'm assuming is suicidal ideation protocols. Is that what is considered a suicide risk assessment?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a part of the protocol.
Do you, sorry?
I'm trying to make sure I was verifying that I was answering correctly.
Okay. And we have currently... Four schools that are not receiving any form of services from Heritage Health.
That's correct.
Okay. With respect to their MOU, do we know if the district is named additionally insured on their building policies? Their insurance for building policies?
Or, you said billing or building?
Like?
On the, I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
It's my understanding that when a therapist is in their office, they are covered by their insurance. Is their insurance willing to cover that therapist when they're not in their building?
Uh, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, I can definitely find that out.
That is something that, I mean, because I know that the MOU says, you know, we're, we're not, you know, nobody's gonna be going after anybody, but the issue would be if a parent had a problem. And is the district wide open for liability because that therapist is not employed by us? And if Heritage Health insurances don't specifically cover them in a mobile status, meaning that they're off-campus, they're not in their office, and they're doing services elsewhere, I don't want that to be an issue for the district. How do we determine what schools Heritage Health chooses to go to?
Um, I believe there's a conversation with our counselors and the Heritage Health counselors, and it's driven by that acuity spreadsheet. So where, where we have the greatest need is where the counseling team goes.
So it's not all about, I mean, one isn't a greatest need, it's a bulk number that becomes the greatest need?
Um, I think it's the chi, it's the, the children individually. Ideally, we would have a therapist at every building, but...
I was gonna say, how many therapists?
We're just, we're short, I mean, there's just a shortage of mental health therapists in our area, so... We have four buildings that are not covered right now, so we could easily use two or three more therapists.
How many therapists do they appropriate for our district?
I think we have four.
No.
We have three buildings that are not covered at Full Spirit Lake and Twin Lakes, and two therapists.
Thank you. So they're spread pretty thin.
Is that what the MOU is for?
I don't just, I don't know if it specifies the number.
I think it's pretty, it's a generic way to say, a lot of specificity to it.
What was that meeting, was that the tenth, April tenth, is that the one it's attached to?
No, the area.
Yeah, so it's the April, yeah, it's the April, yeah, it was never attached to the meeting area, it's the tenth. You have L five on the agenda, both versions are there. So it's, first insurance.
Can you speak up?
There is a liability insurance.
I don't know, this actually answers your question, Michelle. There's a, there's a statement in the MOU that the provider shall be solely and entirely responsible for its employees during the performance of services under this agreement. It goes to local prior issues, but I don't know if it has a control.
Right.
And L of the, I don't know what page that is. Page three?
It's, uh, the liability number three, and then a contact person, and there's other depends.
And then L on page three says they carry a liability insurance.
Yeah.
But it doesn't say if we're a writer on that or not making any insurance.
Who's supervising them when they're in our building, so it's still...
I don't think we are, we don't have supervision of them in buildings, or we still?
We don't?
Not to my knowledge. We've had staff working with them, but I don't know that they are in the supervisory role.
Okay. Well, because I would think that, you know, if they're accessing our buildings during school hours, you know, the principal's there, staff's there, it could be more collaborative. But if they're just going into our buildings when nobody's there, I mean, how are, number one, do they have keys to the building? I mean, are they just, that was news to me when it was brought out and during discussion.
Talking about the summer camp?
Well, there were a few parents that said that they'd come over the summer to sessions, and then I didn't know that there were family sessions going on either.
Yeah, and I, I think actually that, this is a, I think, I'd have to check, but I do believe that, that Heritage Health will use one of our conference rooms downstairs here. So there's some that just... They're not, I don't believe they're going into our schools.
Okay. So if they're seeing a kiddo up in Appleton or Timberlake, I guess would be more appropriate, then they're gonna come down here to the district office?
I have to look at it.
Yeah, they coordinated it with the principals, and the principals have to schedule when they're coming in the building.
So they're in this building?
The principals. So, the central location for most of the summer sessions was here, for John Brown, because it was more central. The coordination of getting into the building, having access to the building, to a point of contact was that building principal. And I continued to follow up with the Heritage Health there, just over the summer.
So Heather's, Heather's the lady who's in the district between us and Heritage Health. I again would like to advocate for a survey of our families, because we have consistently done that when we want to make a change within our district, one way or the other, that we do survey the parents. So I would like to advocate for that. I think it's important for every parent to have the opportunity to get their input. That is still my position.
Do you want to be that actor, you know, regardless, either way, do a survey or sweep up to the, to the community?
So we have to vote, and then tonight, right? Well, there, there is an action, and yes, I mean, so you're saying regardless, we still want the community feedback? I do. Okay.
Yeah, I understand what you're suggesting. The difference I see is that the service does not impact the broad spectrum of parents across the district. It's a very narrow group that's involved with this. And we have something where the potential impact was to a broad spectrum of students, or parents, and our parents, and I think that's probably, taking surveys, number one, takes time and effort and that sort of thing to do that, and I think it's important to do that under certain circumstances, I'm not sure that's all that helpful in this situation.
Well, what I'm hearing from the community that people don't even know the service exists, when we're not servicing all of our kids, when we're only choosing a small population.
We're not the ones that are choosing them though.
We refer, our, our schools are referring them, but it's Heritage Health, is my understanding, that choose that decides what students are, are seeing.
Yeah, I think there's just a lot of confusion in it, because you're, you're right. I've, I've heard both, but it's been proposed to us and reiterated to us that basically the district's hands-off, and Heritage Health does all their own stuff, that they're still in and in the schools, but then we are also told that this is just to provide the place for already, those who are already getting counseling for them, so they can, you know, get the counseling, not have to leave school, and all those types of things. So I think maybe there's more going on than just that, from, from what I'm gathering. That, you know, there are other assessments going on, or, so it's just the seventy-eight kids, no more. We don't have anything to do with referring more kids, or parents, or it's all parental input.
It's all parental input, so if in a conversation a parent talks about, in the course of the conversation, counseling comes up, and a parent says to our staff, "I, I don't have, I don't think I can afford it," or "I can't physically get my child there," they're given the contact information so they can contact Heritage Health, and then Heritage Health will make the determination as to whether or not they can get them in, because like everybody else, they, they too have a waiting list. Even within our district, we have a waiting list, because we're short therapists.
So I think that's what part of the confusion is, because that's really not explained anywhere. And even as the contract reads, as the contract reads, they have free unfettered access anywhere, anytime in the district. But I understand that's maybe not what's happening, but the way the contract reads, that is what can happen. My concern is this, is that anybody could come to the district, and we're setting the precedence, that how do we tell other people no, when we've told them yes? And if it's just Heritage Health that we're referring to, you know, referring the families to, or the families are going to, however that's happening, I'm still not clear on that either, you know, should we, don't we have to do other people? Or, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out all the, you know, the lay of the land. Because even in the articles that were in the paper, with the quotes that were in there are sort of contradictory too, because, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't say that. And then if we look at this, with the psychiatric hospitalizations and stuff, I don't know how that's happening either, I don't even know what that looks like, you know?
Our counselors have, they actually have a list of community resources. So if a parent in a meeting was asking about counseling, they have lots of options, and they're specifically talking about cost, or an inability to take time off work to get their child to, because Heritage Health is on-site, that's, that would be the direction. We would, we would at least let them know that that service might be available to them. But we do have other families that take their kids to other services, and our counselors just work with families depending on what the families want. So we're not, we aren't just sending kids to Heritage Health, but...
Which I didn't think we would do that, because that's just in the...
And I'm trying to find it, but it, it does say in here that the, the district has the opportunity or choice to also, it's not an exclusive right to counseling in our schools, but that is, I don't remember where it's actually...
We actually did bring an MOU to, for a different counseling center, and I can't remember now which one it was, but you asked us to, to set that one aside because there was some uncertainty. And I don't know if that, if that center was actually purchased by Heritage Health, I can't remember now. But there were, there, what we did bring initially, we brought two, because we were trying to increase the number of therapists that were available, because we do have a waiting list, and we, the board didn't approve one of those two.
Do we have office space that we can hire more counselors for the four schools that don't have the services?
I don't know if we have a space where you could have somebody in that, in that, in that room all day, every day, but I guess if you're talking about hiring our own mental health therapist, and then have them cover the remaining three schools?
Then rotate through those.
We could find, we could definitely find, that, that space could be available for sure. It just would need to be, you know, our, our school counselors, the scope of their work is they're supposed to counsel kids in a way that helps them access their learning, and that's really the scope of their work. So when we're getting into the mental health, which helps kids access their learning if they're, if they're struggling with some mental health things, it does help them do better in school. But it would be a different type of counselor, it wouldn't be another school counselor, I guess is...
Right, right. Well, wasn't years ago that, that building over here now, next to the MOU, wasn't that where all of the psychologists and all that? Didn't they occupy that at one time?
Yeah, that building's been in a lot of things, but yeah, we did have all of the school psychologists, most of them. I don't think they were all there in that building. And then the admin assistant at the time to the special director was in that, in that facility. But it's now being used as a classroom, so they've all kind of been dispersed. And they have offices in schools, so they're in buildings. And oftentimes, that, that's one of the spaces that gets used when the therapists are in the building. If the school psych happens to be at a different school that day, then they can use that office. The principals give up their office for counseling, and they'll go and be in classrooms and do the things that they should be doing anyway. And then SLPs also kind of rotate through the district, so they schedule the therapists on days when the SLP maybe is at a different building, so that space is available.
How many school psychologists do we have employed?
Is it three?
Three.
Three.
Three, yeah, three.
Two in-person. Oh, that's right, and we have one that's virtual only, because we had an opening we couldn't fill.
And the school psychologists are or are not helping with mental health here?
They are not. They are solely helping to identify and do the testing for referrals to special education.
Okay.
And so every, every three years, if you're on an IEP, they have to be retested. The school psychologist does a portion of the testing. Anytime we have to do an IQ test for gifted and talented, or for special ed, it's the school psychologist who does that. So they, that's with just the two of them, and then the one online, and four to get hundred kids there.
They asked?
And even, I would say, I would say the programming for a school psychologist isn't around mental health. It's, it is really directed toward...
Testing.
Testing.
I mean, we don't have any of that written.
None.
Yeah. I don't have any more discussion, I know, I mean, I have lots of questions, but this isn't a format to get an answer in, so... Still, it did, you know, it's very broad.
Why is this?
You know, when you ask me, why isn't this the? Well, because like some of this information, I don't know how we end up, you know, what is, what is the district's part in the hospitalizations, or the referrals to the hospitals, or, you know, I don't know how all of this works, you know? We've never been given that information? So that's all, I just don't know, and I think that's a back and forth thing that we have there. Should we have? It needs to be more narrow, more focused, more, you know, so everybody, at least written, so everybody knows where the boundaries are, you know, where the, where the safeguards are. so everybody knows where the boundaries are, you know, where the, where the safeguards are or aren't, or, you know, what they can do or can't do, or, you know, parents, you know, I guess my only other point of concern is that the schools that aren't being serviced, they actually have suicide, uh, violation protocols, assuming that's the suicide risk assessment. So there's obviously needs at these schools, but we're not servicing them because there's a lack. I just don't understand why these kids aren't as much of a priority as the other ones. Um, and that's, that's just one of my bigger concerns. But beyond that, I don't really have any further discussion that I feel is pertinent to this matter.
So what you, so what Ramona wants to know is not spelled out in the, in the MOU?
Well, they'll...
For who's responsible for what and who's doing what?
Or at least how the protocols and procedures. I mean, as it looks like now, they have a captured audience. They filter in and out of the schools. I mean, this is a perception. They filter in and out of the schools. They're not accountable to anybody. Nobody knows what they're doing. I understand somebody's tracking. But what I'm saying is the perception of that, nowhere is it outlined, you know, and they're seemingly the only ones in the schools, you know? So it really does look like a captured audience. They're allowed to come in and do whatever and, and nobody else is. You know, that's all I'm trying to do is get past the perception. I understand we have seventy-eight kids plus more that need help. But just to be free floaters everywhere for everything without anything written down is, is just not right. You know, it's, it's irresponsible.
What should be writ, I guess I don't understand what should be written down.
We don't have any policy that, that governs it at all. So we don't have any policy or any feedback or any expectation or anything even stating that, you know, we're gonna provide a place for counseling to happen or we're gonna, there's, the board doesn't have a policy on that. There's, there's many out there, but we just don't have one. Where all those things would be declined, you know, that this is what the board, or what this school district does, you know, under these circumstances, blah, 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 blah.
Well, with respect to space, I think that's, that's mentioned in the MOU, but we will provide the, the space for the operation. The, you know, my, my vision of this is we have a situation where we have the resources available that, you know, we've chosen to use it for the last four or five years. Um, and it's done with the understanding through the MOU that we're accepting the service, they're offering the service. They indicate that they don't necessarily have to be the only one. There could be others if we can find somebody who can meet the same kinds of criteria and service. Um, with respect to, beyond that, you know, the parents are the ones who are really in the control seat. Once, once the contact is made between the parent and Heritage Health, then it moves to that arena as a, as a situation between the parent and Heritage Health. The parent can decide whether or not they want to pursue the service or not based on the intake mechanism. And if at any point the parent decides this is not working and they want to do something different, they can, they can pull their shot from the service. Uh, and, and we're not a part of that piece of the operation. Nor do I, do I think we should be. Uh, because if we do, then we get into a whole different arena, I think, in terms of, of, as you say, responsibility, liability and other kinds of things. If, if we start getting too deeply into the weeds with how that such, that mechanism operates, then we take on a whole new responsibility. Our, our initial responsibility is to offer the referral if the parent feels a need for it. And beyond that, that goes, as I say, into the arena with the parent and Heritage Health. And they, they have their back and forth. You know, that hurts a pretty compelling testimony at the other time in terms of, of the services that have been provided.
I don't think anybody on the board has ever, uh, you know, denied the fact that we have the need for the service. That has never, that's never been the issue. The issue has been that it's very broad and open-ended. But to say that just because we have an MOU, we don't need a policy is not true. Many schools have policy that govern the MOU. It's just like when we rent our facilities out. I mean, if the board chooses not to have a policy, that's fine. I do know that when I first got on the board, the first few years, we had several lawsuits because we didn't have a policy. And we were at fault. So I think we need policy...
Regarding this situation?
No, but similar, similar situations. Yeah, yeah. No, no.
Okay.
Um, and, and we didn't. And then we tried to scramble to put in place a policy that really didn't fit the thing. That's all I'm saying. I mean, the board can choose to do whatever it wants, but if it wants to take the liability of a possible lawsuit because there isn't anything saying, here's our stance, other than the MOU, there's no governance to the public, you know, as, like we have with everything else, you know?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. We have other MOUs though.
Yep, and we have policy for them.
How would the policy be different from one to another?
The, well, basically the policy is to the public to understand the MOU, you know? This is what it means. This is how rental, facility rentals happen. This is how this happens, kind of thing. Um, that's all I'm saying. That's the only reason I'm, I'm bringing it up, but, you know, whatever you guys want to do, it's fine.
I know, I guess the one thing I would say to, um, what you just said, Trustee Jones, is no matter which resource our counselors are referring to parents, this, our steps are always the same. Whether it's Heritage Health or Rafferty Counseling or Children's Mental Health at the state level, it's always a conversation with the parents and then a referral. And once we've done that part, whichever way the parents choose to go is the parent's choice. Um, the one difference with Heritage Health is that we're trying to provide a service to, for families who can't afford the drug attending. So we're providing the space. But that's really the only part that we play in.
There was a comment made at our last meeting that there have been parents that are, feel like they're forced into the, into the agreement. If that is the case, I think that's a district issue and not any issue with Heritage Health. It's not that. That's a, that needs to be, that does need to be handled by us as a board. That, I don't think that has anything to do with this MOU.
Yeah, right. And I am doing some investigating, um, based on some of the, um, concerns that Trustee Kristen brought in.
Okay.
So I'll have follow-up for the board at the May board meeting.
So do we have a MOU with a drug testing company?
Not that I've ever seen.
But we have a policy.
Policy.
And they operate in our school. I know it's totally different, but at least there's a policy for that, you know?
Right.
For drug testing. And it kind of spells out everything that...
How it's supposed to happen.
Yeah.
Do we have a drug testing?
I've never seen one. We actually are looking at, uh, getting some quotes from other companies so I can bring that all up, that one.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion?
No.
All entertaining motions at this time.
Are we moving into the action items?
Yes, we can move into the action items at this time.
If there's no further discussion. I move to approve the Heritage Health MOU.
I would say.
We have a motion in a second. Do we need to have further discussion?
Can we, can we approve the MOU with the understanding that we're gonna write a district, district policy to protect the district? Is that possible?
Anything's possible.
I don't know. Just ask it.
Yeah.
Are we making a motion?
Yeah, yeah. I made it.
Second.
Great. We have a motion in a second and further discussion?
Can we have a quick motion back?
Clerk, please read the motion.
Motion made to approve the MOU with the understanding that the district writes a policy.
Sounds good.
So we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Name and date. Create favor to opposed motion case.
Yes.
That we do need to, to the budget work session, have a voice for the... That's what we were looking forward for tonight, so...
I went for cities yesterday and I went for industries today.
That you asked about my comment, part of that was a little late because they changed the law as far as...
We can't restrain kids anymore, so you just...
We can't leave them in closets.
Yeah. We can't restrain them. We can't even touch them anymore.
You write it in the IEP with the parent's approval, you could, but our philosophy is ready to knock no hands on.
So you can't have one?
Be shown him, just for clarification.
You had mentioned a survey.
You didn't mention...
I just needed all the survey to start wearing the IEP.
Well, you weren't yet to do the permission and original technique.
Doesn't mean all of you discussed.
No.
Oh, you probably didn't, didn't do, you were in school here.
You're all kids, you're seventeen.
Yeah.
I was seventeen at the root.
I mean, you can join us. You don't have to sit way back there. I might want to grab the, I think that chair's built.
Well, Chelsea gave us a bunch of information which was valuable. I haven't really had a chance to dive into all of it. It's fairly significant. I mean, substantial and significant. Has anybody else had a chance to dive into it?
I don't see what it was. I didn't see any email.
Yeah, back on April eighteenth, she sent us building level budget forecasts.
Oh, yeah.
It was all we...
Lots of information, right?
A substantial amount.
There are, I guess, a couple of pieces of legislation we could kind of start with that will have an impact on how, what we do and how we write our budget. Um, the first one being the House Bill two ninety-two, which is the property tax relief bill. Brian anticipates that we're gonna get, um, probably one point five million dollars to Lakeland. And the language in the law says that those dollars have to be applied to, can only be applied to facilities. And they, if you have a bond on the books, it has to be applied to the bond first. And so we have a nine hundred thousand dollar bond payment we have to make next year.
How much?
Nine hundred thousand. And then the year after, we make our last payment of nine hundred thousand. Then we own our buildings outright. So we have two payments left, which is good news. So...
Okay. In all fairness, I've been told we've had two payments left for four years.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
So that's not...
That's not true.
I thought the last payment, the last year...
No, but Brian's been... No, but Brian's been saying for a long time that the last payment will be made in twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, twenty twenty-four. Okay.
I had spelled out in the audit, I think usually they best always say in the audit.
So that one point five million will be applied to the nine hundred thousand dollar bond first payment. And then if we have a plant facility levy on the books, the remaining six hundred thousand would be, would be applied to that. It, so, and so what it does in essence, if we have a nine point five two million dollar supplement on the one point one four six plant facility, if those both pass, and the nine hundred dollar, nine hundred thousand dollar bond payment, they basically add that all up. And that would be money that would be collected from our taxpayers, but they're going to subtract the one point five million that we're getting from the state in lieu of our taxpayers. So it, the amount that our taxpayers will pay will be reduced by one point five million.
We don't get any less money.
We get the same amount.
We don't get any more money.
It's the same amount.
The taxpayers aren't having to pay that.
An automatic tax relief.
Automatic. And then there are additional, then there are additional pieces to that bill, but that's the one that pertains to public schools. So if we didn't have a bond or a plant facility levy on the books, you can only use those dollars for facilities. So we could put it into a capital projects fund and the board could choose to save that money and keep adding to it to purchase land to build a building, could save that money and keep adding to it to eventually build a building, could use it for renovation of a building or, you know.
It has to be.
Has to be facilities, cannot be used for staff at all.
Perfect. So if the plant facilities levy does not pass, then nine hundred thousand of that would go towards wiping out the bond and then the remaining would come to us for plant use only?
Well, if we have a supplemental levy on the books, it has to be applied to taxes that the taxpayers will pay us. So that six hundred thousand would be applied to the supplemental levy.
Okay, so it doesn't matter if it's a plant facility or supplemental, it just goes against whatever levies on the books.
It goes to the spending priority goes in this order, existing bonds, temporary supplemental levies. Then you can put it, then after those are all exhausted and, and paid, then you can do reserve account for future facility needs or for a new facility's bond.
Okay. So if for some reason we get to a point again where we need an emergency levy, it would go against an emergency levy? Because that would be considered a temporary, wouldn't it?
It's not a supplemental.
Okay.
Facilities. Well, it can go to a supplemental levy also.
I'm just curious what a temporary would be then?
Just the supplemental, one that's literally called a supplemental levy.
Okay.
An emergency levy is an emergency levy?
Right.
But the plant, plant facilities is also a supplemental levy, so it would apply to, that's how it was described to us, was bond first, then plant facility, then supplemental.
Okay.
Well, it's pretty much written with that one, my lady, and then a new statute. It's pretty thorough.
So that's one piece, so that's good news. And there are additional tax relief coming, even from like at the county level, they're, they're getting money, so it will be applied to taxpayers. So there will be some tax relief. The second piece of legislation that is important in the budget conversation is the governor, uh, there was sixty-five hundred and thirty-nine dollars or some weird number, but roughly sixty-five hundred dollars per allocated F T E of pay increase for certified staff coming to the district. Because we're going from enrollment to A D A, we actually will have, and, and allocated is just general funds. So they aren't counting in that allocated, the teachers that are paid through our federal dollars, so our title teachers, no special ed. And then with the shift from enrollment to A D A, we have a total of, Brian's estimating two hundred and twenty-five units. And we have two hundred and eighty-seven teachers.
In the general fund.
Total.
We have three hundred and eight total.
Okay, so in the general fund.
So then, and yes, then he's speaking specifically in the general.
Okay, so we actually have more than that. So we, he's budgeting two hundred and twenty-five, we have three hundred and nine?
So we're saying.
Three hundred and eight. Three hundred and eight, so we, so we statutorily have to get, use that, those dollars for pay raises. We can't use it to fill in the gap between what we pay and what we get. It has to be raises. We actually are going to have to report to the state by staff member how much each person, each certified person got. So the governor is going around the state and saying, everybody's getting sixty-five hundred dollars more. That's not true, because he's not giving us sixty-five hundred for every staff member. He's giving us sixty-five hundred for basically two thirds of our staff. So when Brian ran that all through, it ends up being a fifty-five hundred dollar raise for all of our certified staff, which we are obligated to give. So it doesn't help us as far as.
You take the total of dollars allocated by the total staff.
So then your, yeah, so your federal program fees can also get down as well.
Yeah, so one of the budgetary decisions, I guess, if, as the board is looking at budget, that we have to kind of talk about is prior to the previous superintendent, we typically, if the state said we're paying for two hundred and twelve teachers, we have right around two hundred and twelve teachers, which helps us with not needing to go to the taxpayers as much. We, when we increase the levy, we increase the staff because we added programs. So this board has to decide, do we cut back on programs? Do we try to get more in alignment with where the state is, if, with regard to what they're paying us for? Or are we comfortable with the programs we're running and the staff that we have? And the levy dollars that are coming, so that's, that needs to be part of the conversation because you guys are going to have to give some direction so that we have a better understanding of what, where we want to go. And I wouldn't suggest that we, if the levy passes, I wouldn't suggest that we cut people, but we have right now forty-eight staff not coming back either because they're category one, and which means their job is done statutorily at the end of this year, there is no job for them moving forward. We have, and then we have resignations and retirements. And so we could say, let's look at the positions that are being vacated and which ones are absolutely necessary to fill. And can we start to pare back a little bit? But when we do that, you know, class sizes might go up. And so we just, that just has to be part of the conversation.
Well, I think we need to understand what the class sizes will be if we cut down to the number of staff, teachers that the state's actually funding with the number of kiddos we have in the district. What is that actually going to look like?
Right, and I'm not suggesting that we get all the way down to where the state is because the state's funding us based on our A D A, which right now is at ninety-four percent. So they're funding us based on ninety-four percent of our forty-eight hundred kids. Well, our forty-eight hundred kids are here, whether they're in school today or not, they're still here. So we still have to staff for the forty-eight hundred. So I don't think we can, I would not recommend that we go all the way down to the two twenty-five that Brian's anticipating. But I do think we could, this year at least, look at how do we step it back a little bit? And what does that look like? And with regard to class sizes, we can roll our numbers over from this year to next year and look at how many, how many first graders are we going to have next year and how many second graders? And if we, if we didn't refill some of those positions that are being vacated, what does that do to class sizes? We could look at, we could look at doing that.
Well, and I, I do think that's important. I mean, if you take two twenty-five and divide that into forty-eight hundred, that's twenty-one point three. It's twenty-one and a third kids per person that have two hundred and twenty-five, but.
They're not all full-time teachers?
Well, so the two hundred and twenty-five is not certified staff.
It's certified staff, but certified staff includes counselors, school psychologists, nurses, elementary P E teachers, elementary music teachers, the A L P teachers, the title teachers, special education teachers. So it, it's not just your classroom. It's all of those ancillary people around the classroom that provide support and additional programs for kids. So you can't truly divide it that way and get that number, I guess.
If we get no levy and the state only gives us and says, you're getting money for two hundred teachers, I mean, what choice do we have?
Right, I'm talking about if the levy passes. Yeah, if the levy doesn't pass, then we're, we have a whole different conversation.
Passes, we just, I mean.
But if we don't want to, if we want to provide a little bit of tax relief to our patrons, we, we could, I just am saying, we could look as a board is, can we back it up a little bit and get a little bit closer to, and not, not go out and cut people's jobs, but take, really be intentional about the jobs that are being vacated this year, at the end of this year because people are moving on? And identify which ones we want to fill and which ones we are, we are okay with not filling because it doesn't have dramatic impact to programs or class sizes.
Programs for at least on the levy.
Advanced learning, um, as far as certified positions, it would be the advanced learning program at the elementary level. The principal assistants.
Okay, instead of assistant principals?
Correct, so, correct. So the prin, the principal assistants are people who are on the certified, they're still on the teacher side of our schedule, but they're not in a classroom, they provide support in the office with discipline and, and teachers. At the elementary level, because of the discipline and the, just the intense behaviors, I think it would be really hard for our elementary principals to not have a principal assistant. At the middle and high school level, they have assistant principals, so if we had to look at cutting that position, I think we could, and not have a negative impact at the school level. I don't know how you do that for elementary, cut that position.
Well, there aren't. There aren't assistant principals at elementary, there's just principal assistants.
That's correct, yeah.
So, so in a sense, if we cut the principal assistant, the principal would be on their own, is.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I, I guess my suggested approach, both for the situation that we're currently facing as well as the long term, because I think long term, we have to face the fact that we've got to do some parenting. I would want to look at a list of everyone who's not a classroom teacher. Probably by school. And then we would have to wrestle with the priorities through that list deciding which positions are crucial to keep on and which ones are marginal in terms of importance. You know, without looking at that kind of list, I, you know, I.
It's harder to make.
I couldn't, you know, react. But, you know, it might be, might be a P E teacher in one instance, it might be a music teacher in another instance, it might be a counselor in another instance. Until you really see that, that piece of the globe and then try to wrestle with prioritizing that, I think is, is the approach that I would take.
Okay.
That's just me, I mean, I'm not speaking for.
And you, you said by building.
So would my staffing sheets help you without maybe names on there?
Oh, maybe not.
So you can just see what you have positioned?
No, no positions.
Okay. So I can put that together for you guys? Would you, would you like me to email that out to you guys tomorrow? I have it, so.
It would be great to understand how many bodies are actually in the buildings and what they are actually doing within the building.
You know, I think we can all pretty much agree that classroom teachers are critical.
Highly.
Even though we are school charged, yes.
All those ancillary positions are the ones that are kind of up in the air, so to speak, in terms of priority.
The other things that were only levy that when we increased it, um, that were not cla, certified but more classified. So one of the things that we did try to do with, well, this is a certified, but one of the things we tried to do through the levy was our secondary school teachers, so, so middle and high school teachers have a daily prep period equal to one of theirs, one sixth of their day basically. So fifty to sixty minutes, depending on how long their periods are. Elementary, prior to the levy, only had three thirty-five minute preps per week. And they prepped for seven content areas where high school and middle school teachers might have two or three different classes that they're teaching. Elementary people teach seven every day. And so we tried to have a little bit of equity where we couldn't, we, they didn't feel like they could give up more than the thirty-five minutes a day because they need access to their kids for all the content they have to teach. But we tr, we, we used the levy dollars to provide a technology instructor who is a classified person for a prep. And then we increased, so we used to have, um, when I was principal, I had a halftime P E teacher at Bedi Kiefer and a halftime music teacher at Bedi Kiefer, and then I had a librarian, and that was it. And so our kids got those three preps. So we increased, um, they have two, now they have the advanced learning program there. And then the other half of that person's day is to provide some sort of an enrichment for our kids, so teachers have a prep. So there's a thirty-five minute prep every day for elementary right now. And, and while I know that that's ancillary, um, it is important for elementary people to have some.
So I think that's the kind of special we have to have, once, once we see that picture.
Right, so, so the tech person was an increase because of that, for that reason. And, and then we also added, it is warmer here.
Tell me, turn the air conditioner on.
We think they shut off the switch outside because during the winter, when people kicked it down, it was kicking on and they started to blow up our motors, and so I'll call Mike tomorrow. I think they just shut it off for the winter.
And then, then we hired, um, so we, we hired P O Cs, which I don't think we have very many of anymore, but we have a couple. And those people help manage.
Programs coordinator.
And they help our, um, teach our special education teachers.
They are classified, they're not certified.
Right, so it's, uh, our, the intention was the certified teacher, the person with the most training, should be spending the majority of his or her time actually working with our most average kids. And they were struggling to get the paperwork done. And that, that's a, as you know, an intensive paperwork position. And so we took, we used a classified person to provide some support for that. So that was, that came through the levy. And then we also, um, uh, put in place a behavior intervention coordinator at the elementary schools because we were struggling with behaviors on the playground and we needed one person to kind of be in charge of making sure that every time the kids went outside, the rules stayed the same. Because when, uh, in elementary, in the morning recess, classroom teachers are on duty and they may let kids do things differently than the noon duties do who are classified people. And so it was too gray for kids, they never really knew, like, okay, are you going to hold me to this or can I do that? I don't know how many of those we still actually have in place.
Probably at, at all the elementaries, I, I believe they're all there.
They're all still there, so that's a.
Both middle schools.
Yeah, so that's a position that is, that came through the levy.
Those are classified.
Those are classified. Yeah, with, with the, um, but as far as certified goes, we, we did, we used the levy dollars to fund full day kindergarten, which, um, we, we now actually are able to fund with the literacy dollars that Governor Little has given to us. So we, we still get the regular S B A allocation, that, you know, forty kids for one kindergarten. So basically, they fund half of a kindergarten teacher through the S B A. But then we get the additional literacy dollars, which actually fully fund the other half of the kindergarten teacher's day plus almost half of all of our first grade teachers. So the literacy dollars actually are helping us keep our primary numbers lower. And then safety and security.
But do we know how much money we're getting? Because that was one of the.
Yeah, it's a grant. Yeah, it's a grant, so, um, we just actually talked about that last night at, at the safety meeting. So, um, Mark Feddersen is on our team, and he's the region, this region's, um, member of the Idaho Office of School Safety and Security, and he, he's on our team. He said that, um, it's $20 million, that was set aside for this grant, and roughly, um, $25,000 per school in your district, so for our district, we'd get close to $300,000. But in order to get the money, we first have to address any deficiencies that we have in our vulnerability assessments that Mark did for our schools, and we've addressed almost all of those, but we have a couple of fence issues that we would have to use those dollars for first. I don't know if it's ongoing, um, they put it out there this year, I, there's not, I haven't seen an indication that they intend to continue to, to.
There's no guarantee.
Right, I'd hate to put our people there and then have the grant go away, um, but we certainly could use it for, um, the hardware and the, um, those kinds of things, like our, all of our schools need new radios, um, for communication during drills and, um, emergencies, and those are expensive, so there are definitely things we could purchase with that $300,000. Um, so, so there, until we know that's gonna be ongoing, I would hate to put people there.
Okay.
Um, and then the other thing, just for you to have in the back of your mind, which doesn't necessarily have any, a lot to do with budgeting for next year, but I, I did reach out to Amy White, actually asked Lynn to talk to her because she was at the con- law conference, and so I said, can you ask, since Amy's there, can you ask her a question for me? So she did. Um, Corde Lane declared a financial emergency. In reading Idaho Code 33522, I, I did not believe that we could, we could declare a financial emergency, and I verified that with Amy, so there are basically two prongs. The first one is, is you have to have a substantial financial hit, which not passing levy would qualify. But the second prong is you have to have 5.5% fund balance or less, and we're at 16. And so because we have a fund balance of 16%, we can't declare a financial emergency. The only thing that does for you is allow you to reduce staff wages, because by law, staff can't be paid less next year than they were this year unless you've declared a financial emergency. But because the governor put the law in place that everybody's getting a pay raise, you can't pay them less anyway. So it really doesn't do us any good to, to, to even try to go down that road. So, um, I just wanted to put that out there, because, um, people are asking, why hasn't Lakeland done what Corde Lane's doing? Well, we, we can't, we don't meet the criteria.
We don't even know we're there yet.
Exactly.
Yeah, we don't even know who's voting yet.
Right, so those were just a couple of things that I wanted to kind of share with the board.
Are we on a hiring freeze right now?
We have not been hiring, um, I'm not, we're not doing any hiring until we get, uh, I can't, we can't hire people and then cut them. So we need to know that we have a levy.
We do have a, a couple of positions posted, like the college and career of a Timberlake, because that's under different funding.
That's a line item from the state specifically for that.
Then, um, as far as certified and as far as coaches, I mean, we do have some that have been up there for a while, but new ones that have been coming in, we are not posting.
And, and the ones that are posted, the principals know, we won't even discuss interviews or anything until after the levy vote.
I mean, we, we have several, like, resignations and, um, a few retirements that we just haven't posted for those positions yet.
Well, I just, I didn't know we'd gone into a hiring freeze, and when I've got staff from Timberlake calling me wanting, all panicked. I'm like, wait a minute, the board hasn't declared that we're, we're doing.
Yeah, we, yeah, we haven't.
What's going on?
We haven't said that we're in a hiring freeze, I've just asked them to wait until after the levy before we move forward with anything.
We need to know where we are with our staff.
They think we're in a hiring freeze?
According to staff at Timberlake, yes.
We have not used that word.
Yeah.
I've just asked people to wait.
People are all flattered, saying that they're gonna be fired if the levy doesn't pass, and I'm like, you know what? The board hasn't made any decisions, so you can't.
I keep telling them the board, the board gets to make all those decisions. I did tell them if the levy doesn't pass, it's, we're, we have to cut $9.52 million in the budget, and we don't have $9.52 million worth of stuff to cut. We just don't have that much stuff in the budget, so it has, it's gonna be people, and pro- and it's gonna be based on programs, I think, but the board ultimately gets to make all those decisions.
Did any classified staff get a raise too?
Yeah, we got $1 million more this year, um, for classified than we did last year, so they'll get a. And there was a little tiny bump for administrators.
So if you also remember, like, Percy is gonna go a little bit, but the state will help buffer that. And then we did get our health insurance, um, percentage increase, and it's gonna be about 6.9% increase this year, which is good, because any, for me, anything under 10% is good. Last year, we had like a 9% increase, and so we do give more money from the state, um, from, towards the health insurance.
I do think the amount that we got from the state for health insurance went up this year.
Yeah.
That also is a separate line item, so it comes in the discretionary bucket, but they have it, they now have it lined out, so there.
It's up to their discretion, that's why it's discretionary.
Right, we love it with the discretionary money, it has strings attached to it, but that's how it's coming.
So as I say, can you tell, is the increase in state funding for insurance covered the increase of actual premium?
I don't know that.
I mean, it, I mean, it will probably be the same as far as what the district may be able to contribute this year. Um, like, we went last year to a, a fixed amount that we give.
Right.
And I'm what, I, it'd probably be the same, I don't know.
Well, there's.
It's hard to tell yet.
The state gave us more money for insurance, or what they're trying to do is give the districts enough money to get the districts to go into that state fund that the, that the governor wants us all to go into. We've kind of said, kind of held out and not jumped into that, uh, well, one, we couldn't afford it last year, they didn't give us enough money, we're too big. Uh, but even if they gave us enough money, we have retirees who, who retired believing that they had enough money set aside for their health insurance until they, medical insurance until they got to Medicaid. And we pay $7,000 right now, so that's kind of what they budgeted. It would cost them $14,000 per year if we jumped into the state pool, which for some of our retirees would be catastrophic, and so.
Yeah, we have a retiree this year that has $44,000 that they can put towards, um, the unused leave of premiums. I mean, they're retiring fairly early, so they have that large gap until they reach Medicare. And so, I mean, they're dependent on that, so yeah, if we do go to the state trust, then that all is gonna go away. And we, that's been going on for years, and a lot of people have a lot of, you know, money there at their disposal, well, I wouldn't say disposal, but for health insurance to.
Yeah, and we have, our, our, um, because of the bump that we got from the state, we actually, the, the, um, benefit that we provide to our people is actually really good, so. Nobody's complaining. But I can find out from Brian, um, based on the increase on that line item, if that will cover the 6.9%.
Right. Could we talk about Escher funds a little bit?
Yeah.
You know, I've stated before, I have, I have some concern if that money's gonna get jerked back if we don't get it in and get it, you know, get it used.
I think Brian heard the, the board directed him this year to use all of it, so there will be, so we're, so we're, um, the board. The board, the board already approved the purchase of the science curriculum, so we're using Escher dollars for that. Lynn is bringing the recommendation to the May board meeting for the ELA curriculum, and the Escher dollars will pay for that. And then Brian was directed to use the rest of the Escher dollars to pay for staff as allowed, so there should be some money then that can be put, like we did last year, into a, that capital project. So we, Brian was told that we will fully expend Escher dollars by the end of this school year. That came from the board, early on this year.
Okay, so, so how many Escher dollars are out there that have not yet been expended? Do we know that offhand? Round figure, guess?
Well, three and a half million, maybe?
Three and a half million?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I, I heard, I think, 2 million in curriculum.
Correct.
The remainder in staff going forward, or current?
He's gonna use those dollars to cover staff this year, because it's allowable, and then what, and those are all budgeted for in general fund, which means then we'll do the same kind of thing we did last year, after the audit, there'll be a transfer of those dollars to a, a plant facility fund.
Okay.
So the, the Escher dollars, um, will be fully spent this year.
When, when will those dollars flow into the district?
What do you mean?
When will we actually receive them?
The Escher dollars?
Yes.
We, it's in the GRA, so every time we spend them, they draw the GRA down. So that's how the state is, I mean, they're looking, the legislators are definitely looking at how much money different districts have still in their GRA.
Right.
So people are paying attention. Um, ours will be drawn down completely by the end of this year. I'm curious.
Well, let me, let me.
Go ahead.
A more little piece of that, though. Be drawn down by the end of this fiscal year, assuming that the orders for the curriculum materials go in and we get receipt of them and bill for them and make payment for them before July 1?
Yep.
Can and will.
Science is already done.
Unless, okay, I got the link over there.
Yeah, yeah, as soon as, uh, if the board approves the ELA, uh, materials, ne- at the next board meeting, Lynn has the quote, we'll put the PO in and get it, get it shipped off, and it'll be paid for before July 1.
Well, I will just add, it probably is more than 2 million, because in addition to science in ELA, we're finishing out high school, and then we're gonna get order math for the high school, so however much of that is, I mean, I don't have those quotes yet, we're still having all those materials reviewed, and that, I will, everything will be done by the June board meeting, you guys will approve those. Right now, we're just going through the review process for the science and the math materials. So I think it will be closer to 2.5, if not 2.75, for all curriculum, including science.
Yeah, I, I just think it's important that we, we really push to get all that done before July 1st, you know, so you're not carrying some of that over into next year and messing with it.
Yep. One of the things we've been kind of tossing around, um, and I talked to Chelsea a little bit, but when, as we've been out talking to community members about our levy, one of the things that is a frustration for them is they cannot look at our budget and see what we're spending our levy dollars on. So I asked Chelsea, I said, is it possible for us to create a little ledger that looks kind of like a checkbook ledger, where we show $9.52 million, starting in July, here are the salaries we're paying for safety, here's, here's what we paid for what, curriculum, here's what we paid, whatever, by month, so that they can see us drawing down, and these, we can identify, these are the, the, we have 15 certified teachers we're paying with these, and we have 25 classified, whatever the number is. So we can show those salaries and benefits consistently every month coming out, so they can see, they just wanna see, how are you spending the money, and so we just thought, can we make it easy? And then we can just have it on the website, and people can go there, and they can just see each month, these are the bills that were paid from this, and this is what the balance is right now.
Yeah.
So that is something that, when we've asked, would this be helpful, in my mind, it's very simplified, but there, they said, this is exactly what we have been wanting, so.
And can we do that?
Chelsea said yes.
Give her gold star.
That's a five gold star, I'm gonna tell you.
I think that that was a lot of, you know, like you've heard, that's a, that's a frustration for a lot of, a lot of people, myself included, and I, I can read the financials, I, I get it, but so much of the time, we've asked for things to be kind of spelled out and like on paper or on the website, but it's all in Brian's head, and he'll come and tell us stuff, but it's not.
It's not, yeah, and then the old accountability reports that used to go home to the pe- to the taxpayers from Becky didn't actually ever address what we spent the money on, it was all the.
Programs.
Yes.
That are.
And so that didn't.
Awesome.
Exactly, so that didn't help them either, so when we, we just started asking the question, what, what would you like to see? And how can we provide that information for you, so that's what we came up with, so that's what we're gonna try, and, and see how the patrons feel about, about that.
Well, when I'm looking at, uh, 2022, 23 budgeted, um, overall total, of all total funds, according to what was budgeted, we should have been in the $13 million surplus, but we're on target to be at $19 million surplus. How is that gonna impact, let me look really quickly, where we, how is that gonna influence us with where we go and what we do and how we do it? I'm looking at the financial reports which are provided.
I know, so where my.
Under district.
District. Oh, thank you, sorry, I went to, I went to departmental. Thank you. So are you looking at the annual budget, Michelle, or budget 22, 23?
I'm looking at the documents that were provided at the last board meeting.
Budget.
So, okay, if.
It's the monthly budget status.
So, so that just means, the reason there are so many funds there is we, we're, we pay salaries over the summer, that number will go down. That's just what we have in there right now, if you get, if we're talking about the same thing.
So do we know if we're on target to be at 13 million? Okay. So if you go. Next one. There, well, there you go.
So are you talking about a $13 million fund balance?
Total funds.
Total funds.
Not just the general fund, and not just the old other funds, talking about straight across the board.
All funds.
You look at the total, all funds for the budget, I mean, 'cause over here, when you're looking, I mean, Brian had us on budget to be at a loss of 2.6 million, um, and then we actually came in at 2.6 over um, with a monthly activity that put us in the hole 3.3 million, but, I mean, and I'm just looking at the general numbers. But we're not, I mean, we're, which is a good problem to have, we're not in the deficit like Brian was anticipating, and I believe that is because of the funding change, because he was kind of, you know, a coin toss of, are we being funded ADA or are we being funded enrollment?
Right.
So he made the best decision he possibly could at the time, which is great to our advantage, but we're sitting with a significant fund balance.
Right, but, so if you look at here, right, um, go one page up from where you're looking, it says ending unassigned fund balance March 23 is $11,604, this is just general fund, but look at what it was in 2022. Now, remember, at the end of 2022, we moved $2.8 million out, so that would make sense, but this, and this is what it is, what it was in April at the board meeting, we still have March, or May, June, and July and August payroll coming from this fund balance, so.
Right, and you can see where we are on his charts that he gives us, um, which I've never really appreciated them until now. Seeing where we're.
These charts?
Yeah, seeing the additional. Yeah, seeing the additional extras that's potentially coming down the road. But it also, I mean, we still have the second half of the tax payment to come in. So I mean, we still have income that's going to be coming in, we're not depleted on not getting income anymore.
Yeah, you've got, you've got some income to come in, but at this point in fiscal year, it really, it really drifts down.
In July.
Right.
It does, that's what I was gonna say, there's a lot of stuff that will actually also go into, for July bills and stuff. So that's where we, the auditors will set that up as an accrual for the next fiscal year.
So I'm trying to find where you're looking at all fund, fund balances.
We got about eleven million is basically in cash.
This right here, is this the fund, is this the fund, I can't, it's cut off, so.
Total funds is the very last, three columns is the total funds that I was looking at where.
Way over to the right there.
Yeah, the thirteen and nineteen.
Yeah. Which budgeted, we were supposed to be at a loss, I'm assuming right now.
So if you looked at last year, at this time, compared to the end of the year, you would also see an inflated fund balance. And then it will start to drift down a little bit, because we still have several months of salaries.
Okay, so let's ignore the fiscal year-to-date actuals and let's just look at the budget. Brian has set a two million dollar loss, and actually, we're at a thirteen million dollar surplus if we're going by budget standards, so.
What do you mean a two million dollar loss?
Isn't that under, we're either over or we're under. So, 2.657980, under the total funds 22, 23 budget. He's got it in brackets, I'm assuming that's a loss, but maybe it's extra, I don't know.
It's not a loss, it's a depletion kind of of your fund balance, it's a reduction of your, no, we still have enough, we're still gonna have a fund balance, which means that we have, that is, a fund balance is a surplus. But the 2.6 million dollars that's depleting our fund balance down.
Okay, so instead of being depleted down 2.657980, we're going to be increased 13.122514.
No, that's, no, that is what it's going to end down, yes.
And that's what is budgeted, right next to it, sorry for interrupting you.
No, you're good.
Is the actual. So here's what he thought we were gonna be, and here's where we actually are, and I think that 2.6 is what we moved for on the land.
That is correct, yeah.
Yeah.
And this.
That was us using fund balance, that was us taking the amount out of fund balance to use on capital projects. That's why it was reducing the, the whole budget would have been, you should, don't necessarily want to have any going into or coming out of fund balance if you have it where you want it to be.
Which I understand that, I do, and so by us taking that money out and moving it over to the land, whatnot, within respect to the budget, it was showing that we were decreasing our pot. But going by the budget in the blue, we're actually going to now have an increase in our pot.
There is currently an increase to the pot.
It just hasn't been fully expanded.
But because we haven't spent all of what we've.
We still have coming to bills.
Yeah, we still have bills that we're gonna have to pay out of that. That three million dollars going into fund balance is gonna keep reducing until.
So when we're listing these budget amounts, that's only specific to the month?
Yeah, it says specific to year-to-date on the top.
So this is year-to-date, the column to the left, the 22, this is what was actually budgeted. And this is our year-to-date, this is where we are right now in the budget, so we still have May, June, July, and August to pay. We still have four months.
Actually, April, because this is the, this is the end of March.
So it was reported at the beginning of April, so it's.
Five.
We're still gonna have April bills coming down of it.
Welcome.
Hi.
April, May, June, July.
Not August. Because August, August payroll accrues back to this year too, right? Because that's the last month of their contract.
Of the, yeah, right.
Yep. So, so it's all the way through August that comes from this.
For payroll, yes.
Payroll, yeah.
So, but the bills for other services and stuff, those would only go until.
Randy, this three, 3.58.
June 30, yeah.
This 3.589 where it says excess of revenues.
Yep.
This might be the Esser dollars? No?
No, they were, the Esser and the COVID and all that was never part of the budget, they were never realized in the budget.
That's, that's in excess of revenues over the expenditures, we haven't spent everything that we are anticipating spending. We've probably brought in most of what we anticipate bringing in. So right now, this time of year, it's gonna be skewed and it's gonna look like a lot of money.
So where would the, when Brian draws the GRA down and uses the Esser dollars, does that not show up anywhere in the budget?
No, it never has, and that's another thing the publics can plan without.
No, because it's kind of washed, because you have the, you have the money going out, but it's also decreasing. You know, you're getting those revenues out of the GRA, so you're bringing in those dollars, but they're also going out. So it's, it's an in and out, so it, it's kind of a pass-through if you will.
So that's hard, that's gonna be hard for the community to understand that, that, that's really why you're showing maybe an increase in your general fund budget, general fund at the end of the year, because you've offset money budgeted to spend with those dollars that are, were in and out, but we didn't spend the dollars we budgeted for those things, because we, so that's, and that doesn't show up anywhere.
Well, we don't have the money.
That's, that, that would be, that money would be in, in there.
We don't have the money, so we spend the money, then they give the money back to us.
Right, yeah.
So it really doesn't show up anywhere, we would have to give them a little spreadsheet that says, here's what we were allotted, but here's what we spent, but here's the thing, it's not because, if we didn't spend it, we don't get the allocation. And they're thinking we get the whole allocation, right? Like, they gave us five million, why are you spending it? Well, we don't have it, we'll leave.
They reimburse us, yes.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the disconnect.
Okay, so that's the part.
But what would be sitting in here is that difference between enrollment and ADA.
Yes.
Because he budgeted on ADA, but we got to go with enrollment this year, so that would ship, kind of show in there, because that's revenues that we didn't anticipate hitting. So it's more revenues than our expenditures that we said we were gonna spend against.
And just for clarification purposes, I did go pull up our budget, the actual full annual budget. The total funds that Brian has listed here for the 22, 23 budget, this 13,122514, is the actual increases that's on our budget. That, that's not, that's not for March, that's for the entire year.
Right, but that's what this poem says, it's the 22, 23 budget, and then one next to it is actuals.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I, I get all that, that's where we're at actually for March or April or June.
For the entire year up to March 31st.
Correct.
So if we, if this is where we actually were to end with fund balance, then we're gonna have money to transfer out again, because we'll be above the 16%.
Correct, and we don't have to use it for capital.
Nope, we can use it for whatever we want.
We can use it to offset. And if we don't get a levy, we may be digging into that more than.
Real deep.
We may be, because we, what's our, what's our range for fund balance in our policy?
Five.
Eight to sixteen. So.
You could take it all the way down.
We could take it all the way down to eight and not be.
Outside.
I mean, we, we still wouldn't even be in the same situation that Corlaine is, because.
Statute is five.
Statute is five, to go into that emergency, we don't want to be in a situation where we're under, our, our policy is there for a reason. We have the money in that fund balance, of course, we want to keep as much in there as our policy says we should, but
We have two huge projects still too, that, you know, we have the Spirit Lane and Apple Elementary that we're sort of, you know, on hold until we get the junior high done over there, so, you know.
But those were monies that were allocated this year, they're sitting in a fund already.
Right, but we don't know, just like the buses are gonna come back, so, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Also, it's more money now, but I think they did, didn't they say they ordered all of the materials for all three schools?
Well, not a lot, I don't know about all, but a lot.
A lot, the majority of it maybe.
The stuff that they would get a better rate if they did.
There still may be some unexpended, which, all that means is that whatever's left of the dollars we allocated for that will remain in and carried forward in that special fund, so it'll be expended next year.
Correct.
Oh, my goodness.
So what happens when I, money? Just got a headache with Louis' head out.
Need a hair tie?
Pretty soon.
Starting reading it for you.
Could do a little band bunt almost.
That would be now.
No.
To keep up with the kids.
So, Brian has, I was telling Ramona earlier tonight, Brian has, or maybe it was Randy, Brian has rolled over everything that was in the budget this year to next year without any changes to staffing or anything, just kind of moving all of the teachers over on the salary, and putting the 5,500 dollar pay increase. And he, so he has the budget documents that we have to send to the state done. And all that shows is, this is how much we're paying in salaries for all these different groups, and these are the expected expenditures, which are just the ones that we always have. That's not to say that once Jessica gets in and starts digging around and the board has priorities that they want to make sure that we're meeting, that she can't make some adjustments, but at least for Jessica coming on, she's not gonna have to try to figure that all out.
At the starting point.
She's done that on the revenue side, or all funds.
Oh, everything. Yep, he's filled out all of the form and paperwork that we would submit to the state based on the levy passing. If the levy doesn't pass, we have a lot of work to do.
We'd like to see that.
The document?
I think it'll pass.
I will, I'll ask, yeah, I'll ask Brian.
The indicators are out.
It's not too preliminary for him.
Whiskers are your dealers?
He feels solidly comfortable, we're not utilizing those figures. You know, sometimes you gotta tweak things as you go forward.
Okay, so tomorrow's his last day, I will ask him to email the budget documents to all of you guys, so you can kind of start to sift through them. And Jessica? Well, Jessica will get all of his.
His last days tomorrow?
So there were a few things that we've asked for, do you know specifically? Can you reiterate back to me what we've told you we want?
Yep. Uh, just with regard to budget?
For this, yes.
List of not, of, list of non-classroom teachers by building, I think what Brooke's gonna actually give you is a list of all, all staff by building, not by name, but by position.
If there are ones that you don't think that we would be sure what they do, could you give us a little?
More. A little description.
Great.
Absolutely.
I'll fill that in.
Be careful when there's like acronyms, because you don't always know.
I, I will verify with Brian that, that the increase in the insurance line item that we're getting from the state will cover the 6.9%, and if it doesn't, what, where, where are we with that? And then I will ask Brian to send the budget forms to the board. Those are the three things that I have. Was there anything I missed?
Do I have anything you wanted to put on our list?
I don't know if we have another budget meeting scheduled, I think we have this one.
Yeah, one is one more.
But it's not on the calendar.
We were supposed to have three, and the one got canceled, the one for last week.
Got canceled.
Got switched to, so we don't have a third one.
Thought we were gonna do one after the levy.
We, we did talk about that.
We just, it's just not on the calendar.
Yeah.
So levy, the election is the 1616? Shall we make the 17?
Yes, please.
That's a Wednesday?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
Yes.
Hopefully, we will have sparkling cider to just celebrate that we can breathe a little bit and move forward.
I recommend sparkling Spanish Harder.
Well, we can't, Bob will get mad at us, because this is technically a school district building, we can't have alcohol in here.
I'll go stand out on the grass. In the street.
Yeah. Don't have your keys in your hand.
I'll join you.
You can have them in your hand, you can't have them in your motion.
Oh, okay.
Can I have my whistle?
I'll join you.
Okay, so, March 17th, is that, or May 17th?
May 17th.
I keep saying March, I don't want to go back to March.
You guys have policy committee that night?
We can bump that.
So we can change the policy committee to.
Oh, we did have a budget workshop on the 22nd of May.
Yeah, we did. I'd rather, I'd rather do it right after, if it, the next day. Because if it, if something bad happens, I don't, I don't think we need, we can wait till the 22nd.
Yeah, I agree. We need to be at 17.
Yeah. You might want to leave the 22nd on there, just in case you need it all by time.
Oh, gosh, I'm all confused.
And then just so, just so the board kind of knows the timeline for budget. We have to submit our budget to the Corlaine press and publish it, and we need to have it submitted by Thursday, the 25th of May would be the preferred date. The 26th is like the drop dead last day, because it has to run once each week, two weeks prior to our budget hearing. And if they happen to run it on Monday or on Sunday and we don't get it to them in time and we miss it, then we, then we're off for everything, because.
When is our budget hearing?
June 12th, or that, whatever that Monday is, is it the 12th?
That is the 12th. But if we need to bump the hearing because of.
Right, but the hearing has to be 28 days prior to the, the regular July board meeting. So you, we can't really do that, because our regular July board meeting is set already. And it has to be 20, the board hearing, or the budget hearing has to be four weeks prior to. We're like right on with everything.
Super close. And the notification for the budget hearing has been sent to the county?
Both counties.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Brian sent both of, both of those mid-March, he sent them in, I verified with him.
Okay.
So we are on a tight timeline, I guess that's just, so we know. Hopefully, we don't have to make any changes to what Brian's put together, we can just submit it to the press early and ask him to run it, the, the last part of May, beginning of June, and then the first full week of June.
Okay, but if he's just rolled over last year to this upcoming year? Sorry, correct?
Oh, no, no, I'm just like, not over this.
Okay, not a worry, just making sure. If he's just done that, has that taken into account the wage increase? Have we, I mean, we haven't even had any form of negotiation with IBB. I mean, nothing is sitting where it should be in my mind.
But remember, we can submit the budget, and then if we have to amend it, we can amend it. Brian, Brian's done the hard work in putting all the numbers into this big, huge database that pulls line items and puts them together to put them into this special sheet that goes to the state. So, and he has taken into account all of those things. Are you familiar with the special sheet?
Um, from a higher end perspective, yes.
Okay.
So it'll be similar, but different.
Yeah, so she'll, once everything comes in, she'll look at it and if, I mean, we have those significant changes, she'll be able to make them and we'll bring it back to the board.
Basically, yeah, basically what, basically what Brian did was he took the, the, just the overall dollar increase we got from the state for certified salaries and divided it evenly amongst all the staff and so that we can show that we're using it for salary increases. If something changes through IBB, Jessica can, can amend it so that it becomes actuals, but, um,
Maintaining, maintaining status quo with the month numbers, the new numbers that we do absolutely know.
Exactly.
That's what.
That's what he's done, yep. The, and the, and the numbers aren't gonna change, so they don't see like by building or anything, it's just an overall, this is what certified salaries are gonna be, this is what certified benefits are gonna be, classified salaries, and it's all based on the dollars that came to us for those things. And so it's not broken out by a certain amount, so we still have some wiggle room in there as far as how we, how we divide it out. And then I don't think he changed, you know, the expenditures are the expenditures for the most part, um, he, he, what he typically does is he looks back at this year and what we actually spent on train, on fuel and makes sure that if that's an increase over last year, that he's bumping it up a little bit, looking at the percentage of increase year over year, and then he, he puts that into the calculation, so that he's accounting for inflation. So that they're at least gonna be close to what it will cost us.
Okay.
Um, there's just not, there's not a lot of detail when you look at the way that it goes to the state, cause it's just big overall buckets of money for certain things.
It's a summary, and we can get into the, the detail of where we So the packets that you guys just got, that's what I got today at the levy training that the county puts on every year.
Okay.
Actually, the, I apologize, the state tax commission is actually the ones that do it, the county just facilitates it.
Okay.
I think you can download these, I know I've gotten them off their website.
Okay.
But they, they're like, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for going in, thank you for going in, uh, representing that one.
Of course. I have to go two days in a row. I went for city, yeah, yesterday and then today.
Where was this at, where was this at?
The county admin building.
Oh, downtown, okay, I didn't realize they were doing this for schools.
Yeah, they do it every year, actually, I was mentioning, their slides hadn't changed in twenty-five years, they still use the same backgrounds and everything.
Just updating info.
Yep.
Okay, well, with that, showing the budget session, or the work session for the budget?
Do you have to
I know, thirty-two minutes.
Over again, let's get fined.
Let's talk about fines, Dave.
You're bringing us food, that's your fine.
Food. What do you want?
I'm just joking.
Speaking of food, remember that we are doing a barbecue in August, the board and our spouses, and Chartwell's is providing the meat.
And when is that?
Just the meat, right?
Yeah, and then Will too.
I don't mean that, just, oh, we're still I don't mean that disparaging.
Sorry, Michelle, uh, yeah, we talked about us bringing side dishes and we kind of a potluck together.
Yeah, we did.
We're done, we're good?
Yeah.
I said we came out of the budget work session, I don't need to bang the gavel.
All right.